No? All right.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. The next set is December 1st, 2016. Any additions, corrections? Move approval. All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And the final set is the regular meeting of March 16th, 2017. Any additions, corrections? Move approval. All right, it's been moved, is seconded. And seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That takes us through the minutes and brings us to the hearing for this evening. This is Grosso Homes LLC. It's modification to approved application with relief of condition. And Mr. Solo, I'm going to ask you to walk us through that, please.
Yes, Mr. Solo, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this application?
I do. I do.
Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. As the chair indicated, this is...
Need to turn up the volume a little, I think.
Is that better? No. Technical difficulties. Check with the... Wow, you're really going to be close. We'll try that. Thank you and good evening. This is an application for 42 Harris Road. Some of you may remember, this was part of a major subdivision application, which consolidated certain lots and subdivided others along Harris Road. Basically, most of the subdivisions were to create new lot lines and to place the parking garage that now serves Avalon Bay on its own lot.
Wait, there's some kind of...
There's some problem with the sound. You're sure of it.
Does this mic pick me up? Okay.
Well, I was hearing some weird reverberation. It was hurting my ears.
Something I can't... All right. Oh, thank you. Let me orient you. We'll go back and label the sheet as PB1. But the board that's up there just to orient everybody, what we've done is taken the subdivision sheet that you have. Thank you. And at the top of the sheet is Harris Road. Soon as my able assistant moves. Thanks. Located here. Henry is to the left or to the north, right here. What we've done is, in a dark solid line colored in, 42 Harris Road, the lot in question. In tan is the new house that was constructed. And then the dashed line is going to be the fence that we're going to talk about. As part of the original approval, Condition 3 stated that a conservation open space easement be placed on that portion of former Lot 11, which is not occupied by the parking garage. Lot 11 is basically, was, 100, was 50 feet, and then it went about 150 feet. The parking garage serving Avalon Bay is located down here. Avalon Bay would be over in this general area. So when we subdivided it, we chopped off the portion of Lot 11 that was part of the garage and then placed a conservation easement over all of this undeveloped area here. The easement reads, "No buildings and/or structures shall be constructed or located within the conservation area." Based on that restriction, when the applicant came in to put up a fence, staff told him he would have to return to the board as we believe that the board did not contemplate a fence or swings or any kind of structure in the easement area and that he would need to seek relief from that Condition 3, which indeed is what he's doing now. The property itself is located in the G1 zone, the vacant piece, which was the garage zone that we put in place. The house is in the R8, which is in the former township zoning code permitting single-family homes. As I indicated, the applicant is requesting relief to install a fence. The fence is approximately, heads 35 feet to the north, 50 feet, and then 35 feet. As you can see, it's in line with the front and rear of the house as well. It's a six-foot-high vinyl fence. To the right of the lot lines is the fence. You have that on your drawing. You'll see it's a PVC or plastic vinyl fence, six feet high and white in color. That's pretty much a summary of the application. We'll turn it over to the applicant in a minute. I don't know if the board members have questions for me before. Yes?
The easement area, the exact location where the fence is being requested, how much of that, obviously, the applicant owns the property. But how much of that easement? How big is the easement from the actual house itself?
The easement covers the entire vacant portion, the 50 by 100 feet, because you had another 60 or so feet that was the garage that was subdivided off. So all of this area here, in white, is the easement. It's about 5,000 square feet, 50 by 100. The fence is 1,700, 1,800 square feet of that 5,000. That puts it in perspective. So it's roughly a third of the open space easement is proposed to be fenced in.
To understand this, it's roughly a third of the entire easement?
Area, yes. 5,000 square feet that is covered by it. And that's approximate, because the garage is set back a little bit on its own lot and that also has a conservation easement where the garage is not.
Other questions for Mr. Solo? Mr. Bridger, did you want to say anything?
No, I don't have anything to add. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Why don't I swear in Mr. Bridger to the extent that he provides additional testimony? Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no questions, let's hear from the applicant.
Sure. Richard Schatzman, attorney for the applicant. We have one witness today, Mr. Schmidt. Be sworn in by Mr. Porter, please, under Miss Malanius' law.
Two things. We usually swear in the attorneys also, so...
Oh, all right.
Mr. Schatzman, to the extent that you lapse into testimony, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I frequently do, so...
And for the record, I was recently involved in a case in Montgomery Township where my client or the township had retained Mr. Schmidt as the surveyor and professional engineer. I don't view that as a conflict here, but the record should reflect that. So, Mr., the two of you, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this application?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, would you state your qualifications, please?
David Schmidt, S.C.H.M.I.D.T. Reside at 77 Karnes Place.
Microphone. Use the mic. Yeah, can't hear you.
Dave Schmidt, professional engineer, license number 39409. I'm a graduate of NJIT, New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have had my professional engineering license for 20 years. I've been practicing engineering for 30 years. The first 10 years was with Fancliff Engineering. The remaining years is when I started my company, D.S. Engineering. I have been in front of Princeton Zoning Board many times and am also giving testimony in Franklin Hillsborough and Montgomery.
And you're familiar with the ordinances of Princeton Municipality?
Yes, I am.
And you visited the site, obviously?
Yes, I did. I did the plans for the proposed dwelling.
And you're familiar with the Miss Malanius Law, the State of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And the plans were, again, prepared by you or under your direction, correct?
That's correct.
I submit him as a expert professional engineer to give testimony regarding engineering issues?
Okay, we accept his credentials.
Okay. Do you want to locate the fence with respect to the home again, just for a brief review?
Mr. Solo did an excellent job. Again, this is Lot 1001, Block 7101. The exhibit that he has up there is Exhibit PB1. I dated it 4/20/2017. It is a color rendering that your office marked up of the plan that I submitted, that was submitted to all the board members. As Lee said, the fence is located parallel or directly with the front. We go 35 feet. And then we go down 50 feet, and then we go over 35 feet. The purpose of the fence is the contract purchaser has young kids and is to be able to put his kids in the yard and they can play without running into Henry Avenue or Harris Avenue. And that's the reason why we are here in front of you today, is that to prevent, to have safety for the kids that are going to be purchasing this home. Generally, you have half the lot, is basically what we have. As Lee said, you got a lot that's 100-foot width with a 100-foot depth. It's 10,000 square foot square. The line right down the middle is the conservation easement. So 5,000 is conservation easement. The other 5,000 is the buildable house. Usually conservation easements are areas that you have environmentally sensitive lands, such as wetlands, wetland buffers, hydroic soils, or stream corridors. In this case, we do not. And I was not part of the Avalon Bay application or the engineer that was involved. But I guess it was decided to secure the lot from future potential development that will just make it a conservation easement. But usually conservation easements are, as I said, usually protecting environmentally sensitive areas. This area is just basically a lawn area. We have trees located on the properties. There's a few identified on the plans, and lawn is currently maintained. So all we really want to do is put up a fence that's 35 by 50, which is 1,750 square feet of area of a 5,000 square foot conservation easement. As Lee cited, it's around 33 percent, but technically, it's 35 percent of the lot is going to be used for hopefully a play area for kids. And the other 65 percent still remains open space. And it's, I mean, the kids can still play on this property, but with the fence, the homeowner has a nice mind that the kids aren't going to run into the streets or someone coming in and abduct your kids. So it was a thought that we could put this fence up. And as we submitted this application to the Princeton Township Planning Department, they noticed that we needed to come in front of you, and that's why we're here. I mean, I believe that the fence provides safety for the children. The fence is incidental to the openness of the land. The fence provides the homeowner of the house a lot. It still meets the open space requirement, provides a desirable, visible environment. And the allowance of the picket fence, because of safety and shielding, it provides, I mean, outweighs the detriment of the openness of the open space. I really don't think that putting up a fence is, it's not a board-on-board fence. It's not a restrictive fence. It's a fence that you can see through. That it's just a fence that's normally in the area of Princeton Township. Princeton Municipality of Princeton.
No more township.
Yes.
Okay, I would point out to the board that in your ordinance, and Mr. Solo points out in his memo, "Open space is defined in the ordinance as any parcel or area of land or water essentially unimproved and set aside, dedicated, designated, or reserved for public or private use or enjoyment for the use and enjoyment of owners and occupants of land adjoining or neighboring such open space, provided that such areas may be improved, provided that such areas may be improved only with those buildings, structures, streets, and off-street parking and other improvement that are designed to be incidental to the natural openness of the land." So although it's an open space or conservation easement, whatever you want to call it, you can still have structures on it, but it has to be incidental and still not be a detriment to the openness of the land. And as Mr. Schmidt pointed out, it provides safety and shielding from the garage. If you looked at the property, the parking garage really butts right on the lot line of this house. It's a nice new house. And it's in an appropriate location and provides also, because as Mr. Schmidt described, it's a picket fence. It's not a chain link or anything like that. It provides a desirable and visual environment. Mr. Solo also points out that there's no variances necessary. And he says, "Should the board grant the applicant's request, the applicant should indicate if they will amend the conservation easement. Yes, to permit fencing, the board may want to consider whether fencing should be allowed beyond what is requested." The applicant really only needs what is shown on the plans. We don't need any more. So those basically are the comments that Mr. Solo made in his memorandum. Mr. Solo, Mr. Bridger, and Mr. West made in their April 7th memo and the background and information he already gave. And those are the arguments of the applicant. And that's the application. We stand ready to answer your questions. Incidentally, for the record, when we serve homeowners, we don't only serve the homeowners within 200 feet of 11.01, which is the subject property, but I discussed it with Mr. Bridger. We serve all the homeowners within the outer bounds of the old Avalon Bay subdivision back in 2015 that we filed as map 4100 and 4100A. So there are approximately 80 notices we sent out on this, as well as, of course, the newspaper.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Cohen?
So I'm not sure if we were provided with the entire language of the conservation easement. I didn't really get through it if we were. But the question I have is whether there's any stipulation in the conservation easement about whether this property would be available to the public for use versus...
No, I'll read it to you.
Well, let me just respond. The issue is not whether this is public. It was never public. It was part of the garage lot and part of the old zoning called for this area to remain open. And so what we're dealing with tonight is whether... And the board, when it approved the Avalon Bay application, put in a condition that this area would remain open subject to an open space conservation easement. So the history really goes back to an old ordinance that had this area remain as a visual buffer.
Okay, but it's private property.
Private property, and that's not an issue.
Okay, I can read it to you. On paragraph three, "Neither the general public nor the grantee is hereby granted any ownership interest in the conservation area or any real property owned by the grantor," as meaning Avalon Bay and where the success for the Avalon Bay, "as all right title and interest to said property is being retained by grantor subject to the terms hereof." So there's no public access to it. And in fact, the applicant, reading the title, is paying taxes on it. I mean, it's not even exempt from taxation, which...
It's part of Lot 10. It was consolidated, but the condition required that this part of Lot 10 remain open.
Yes, Mr. Cohen?
I guess one other question, maybe for Mr. Bridger. I assume that a hedge would be permissible to enclose a portion of this lot? It wouldn't be considered a structure?
I would concur. Yep.
Jenny?
Well, isn't the reason that they're here is because a fence is... The easement was nothing to be built on there. I mean, the conservation...
Essentially correct, yes.
And so now they're asking to build something on there? That's what the issue is.
It's really here for a modification of the condition that was imposed at the time of the Avalon Bay approval. It's not really a variance. It's a waiver or modification of condition.
But I might point out again, Ms. Cromer, that the definition of open space in the ordinance says that you can build a structure that's incidental to the lands that are preserved. However, the easement doesn't say, doesn't track what the ordinance says. In other words, open space in the ordinance says one thing, the easement says another thing. And in fact, if you're saying it's an open space easement, quite frankly, the easement should have tracked what the definition in the ordinance.
Right. I was part of this.
Yeah, I know.
And I do remember that the intent of it was to keep a visual buffer and to keep the space, that lot, basically empty. Because some people were saying, "Could a playground equipment, piece of a playground equipment go on there?" And there was some question. I think people were saying yes, but it was basically that part of the property was to be kept clear and open.
Yeah, actually, the answer, I think, was no, about the swing set.
Yeah, because I do remember that was asked. I couldn't remember the answer.
Yeah, this is not open space as being, you know, environmentally sensitive. This has a history that goes back to the prior ordinance, which left this area free of creating a visual buffer for what was then the view of the parking garage.
Yes, Mr. Quinn?
Question. I'm looking on Google Earth right now, which is an old, under-construction view, but there don't appear to be too many fences in this neighborhood. And there don't appear to be any corner lot fences that would be sort of on the side of the property. Am I correct in that? I'm sure that we'll hear from the public, the people who...
I took a view. I saw fences, scattered fences.
Okay, well, I'm not seeing them here. And again, I'm not, I obviously don't remember my last trip down there, whether I noticed.
There are scattered fences.
There actually is, although it's not part of this realm. But there are deed restrictions against fences, I believe, even on Harris Road, but in that whole neighborhood, against in the front yard. Not in the backyard.
Any other questions? Anyone else?
I guess, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to ask this, but the applicant is the contract purchaser or the actual owner of this property?
The applicant is a joint venture with the fee owner of the property and will be selling it to a family with children. No, you can answer. The... The applicant is the contract joint venture with the owner and fee of the property, who will be selling it to a family with children, hopefully.
Hopefully selling or hopefully having children?
Yes, anything else, anyone? Okay, we have a number of members of the public who've turned out in response to being notified of this. And I'd really like to open the meeting up to the public and hear from them, please.
Could you limit the time?
I'm going to limit you to about three minutes. And I'm going to ask you to give your name and address, please.
What's his name? He should turn off his mic at the table. I forget his name.
Kate Warren, 17 Jefferson Road. As a longstanding neighborhood resident since 1970, I'm here this evening to voice my opposition to the application made by Grosso Homes.
May I interrupt you? I'm sorry. First of all, I'm not sure everyone's hearing you. We're not hearing you very well. And I need to swear you in. Would you swear or affirm to testify truthfully to the extent you're providing testimony?
Certainly. I'm safe and testimony.
Why don't you sit here and use the microphone?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is...
You should turn that microphone off that's next to you.
Richard.
Mr. Schatzman?
It's on. See, there's a green light?
Thank you.
Okay. As a longstanding neighborhood resident since 1970, I'm here this evening to voice my opposition to the application by Grosso Homes this evening, seeking to erect a six-foot-high vinyl fence along a portion of what was Lot 11 on the corner of Henry Avenue and Harris Road. The fate of Lot 11 once again is causing distress within our neighborhood. Many of this room fought the battle back in the 1990s when the hospital was seeking to expand its garage and was granted permission to demolish a home on Lot 11. In doing so, the remainder of that lot was preserved as open space. No one thought we would be back again to fight another battle to be sure prior agreements are not cast to the wind by developers seeking to erode what citizens worked so hard to accomplish in order to make its property more profitable. Must we forever be vigilant? I have learned over the years that I cannot always be sure that I can rely upon this board to hold fast to the concessions and agreements made in the past. Members of the board come and go. Some of you have no historical context from which to assess this application. I trust those of you who have no knowledge will listen and learn from those here this evening, who lived the history before casting a vote this evening, and understand that the only vote can be a no vote. More recently, as most of us in this room were aware, Avalon Bay was granted its application to consolidate lot lines at the time it purchased the property from the hospital. At that time, this board granted the application but required that a conservation easement be placed on that Lot 11 area. The easement states, as I understand, "No buildings and/or structures shall be constructed or located within the conservation easement area." Close quote. Local ordinances, again, is my understanding, have concluded that a fence is a structure and is thereby prohibited by the easement. Hopefully, someone from the Friends of Open Spaces here this evening to advocate and convince you that the conservation easement, creating the preserved open space, be honored by a no vote. In the period of 2010 to 2020, Princeton will experience a municipal-wide density increase of 714 residential units. 79 percent of that residential density increase is located within the Witherspoon-Jackson-Jefferson-Moore neighborhood, with little or no preservation of open space. Can you imagine a 255 increase in density on your existing neighborhood with little or no preservation of open space? Unlike most of the open space acquired through private donations and tax dollars, Lot 11 is open space created by neighborhood concessions and agreed upon conservation easement. This small piece of open space in a neighborhood, burdened with the lion's share of the town's density, is being threatened this evening by a developer wishing to erect a six-foot vinyl fence to increase profit, and to me, it's shameful. I call upon each and every one of you to deny this application before you this evening. Granted, the application will not only further erode the confidence citizens place within its governmental boards to honor longstanding agreements, but will serve to render meaningless the efforts of so many for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
I have some exhibits to hand out, so I think I'll do that before I start, because I don't want to eat into my time. That's all right. Oh, all right. So I have copies of the conservation easement. I have copies of any ordinance.
Well, those are being distributed. Perhaps we could...
Perhaps we could do some housekeeping. We could swear you in and identify the three exhibits.
Yes, I'm ready to be sworn in first.
You state your name for the record.
My name is Virginia Kerr, and I live at 124 Jefferson Road.
And Ms. Kerr, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this application?
Yes, I do.
And would you identify the three exhibits that we can mark as O1, O2, and O3?
The first exhibit is the full copy of the conservation easement that was placed on this portion of Lot 10.1 as a result of the planning board's condition. The second exhibit is a copy of Township Ordinance 10-272.68. And the third is a survey of corner lots in the neighborhood conducted by me while walking my dog today with respect to whether they have fences, hedges, or no fences at all.
Excuse me, how many copies did you make of these?
Of what?
Of all of them.
One for everybody. I made a lot of copies. I think I had eight copies of the... What are you missing, Jenny?
I'm not missing anything, but are you guys, do you guys have everything?
David and I will share.
Okay.
Oh, 12?
Let's see.
So I didn't make enough copies, that's the problem.
I just wanted to know so we can make sure we can share.
Okay. So...
I'm going to interrupt again.
Yes.
O3 was a survey of corner lots in what?
It's titled "Fences, Hedges, Moore, Jefferson, Harris, Henry Corner Lots."
And do we have that?
And it was prepared by me. Yes, it's a single sheet. It's just a list.
Okay, here it comes.
So I'd like to go over, I'd like to begin with the history, and Kate Warren has already alluded to the history of why Lot 11, or which is now a portion of Lot 10.1, is preserved open space. This was a result of a compromise that was reached between the neighborhood and the hospital when the hospital first wanted to tear down four or five houses on Harris Road to expand its garage. After probably 14 or 18 hearings and almost $100,000 in expenses by the neighborhood, a compromise was reached where the garage plan was pulled, the garage was pulled back a little bit. It was agreed that the hospital could tear down the house on Lot 11, but, and it was also agreed that the garage would have brickwork to make it more aesthetically appealing. And the agreement was that Lot 11 would be preserved as open space, not public access open space, although that was a hope for a while, was a hope that we could get a park. That didn't work out, but it was at least agreed that that would be open space. And as a result of that, the ordinance, which you see as Exhibit 2, says in Section D, 10B 272.68D, "Block 7, 101, Lot 11, Princeton Township shall remain as an open space," the current area on the corner of Henry Avenue and Harris Street. And then when we fast forward to the Avalon Bay application to reorganize the lot lines on the west side of Harris Road, many neighbors were concerned about what would happen if Lot 11 were consolidated with Lot 10, or whatever it was before. And as a result, the planning board put this condition into the approval, saying that a conservation easement would be placed on that lot. So while it's true that the lot doesn't reflect sort of the typical understanding of environmentally sensitive land, it certainly reflects a compromise that meant a lot to this community and also reflected this community's or this neighborhood's sense of what would be visually desirable, because it has become much denser, and so just these patches of open space are meaningful. And just as an aside, I know we have a lot of wonderful open space in Princeton, but much of it is on the periphery with no walkable access by people who live near, to the middle of town. Okay, so I want to turn, and now I want to make two points. And my first is really a legal question, and I am also an attorney, but I'm here as a citizen. But my legal question is, why does the planning board have jurisdiction to relieve this applicant from this condition? Because the conservation easement has already been perfected. And if you look at this document, it's an easement between Avalon Bay Homes and its successor, and Princeton, a municipal corporation. And if you look at Item 1, let's see what the easement says. It says, "The purpose is to preserve to the fullest extent possible such lands in their natural and undisturbed state, and to insure," and then there are three insure clauses, the third of which is no building or structures, but there are two purposes. One is, in this conservation easement, to preserve said lands in their natural and undisturbed state. So that's the substantive statement of what this is supposed to do. Then in Item 3 on Page 2 of this easement, it says, "This easement has been established and this deed is being recorded in order to benefit the general public by protecting and preserving land resources in their natural state." This is the same provision that also says that the public doesn't have an ownership interest. What the public gets is sort of a visual easement, for lack of a better way of putting it. And then in Item 7 on Page 3, it says, "This conservation deed of easement sets forth the entire understanding of the parties concerning the easement area and supersedes all prior discussions, negotiations, understandings, or agreements relating to the easement, all of which are merged herein." So I don't know why the planning board would have jurisdiction to modify or relieve or change this, which is a recorded property agreement between the municipality of Princeton and Avalon and binding on Avalon Bay's successors in ownership. It seems to me that either the governing body is the place that should be looking at this, or alternate, there's a case that one might look at, there's one case that suggests that maybe it's the Chancery Division, but I just, I don't know why there is jurisdiction here. So my second point is, is the proposed fence, responding to this question, is this fence consistent with the conservation easement or open space? And I would say it isn't consistent. First of all, if I look at the language of the conservation easement, it says, "The purpose is to preserve to the fullest extent possible said lands in their natural and undisturbed state." I mean, putting a vinyl, six-foot-high fence does not preserve the land in its natural and undisturbed state, nor for that matter would a wooden fence. Is it incidental? Is this fence incidental to the open space? And I believe the applicant has said, we're talking about, in closing, about 33% to 35% of the open space with a residential fence. And I would say that 1/3 is more than incidental. 1/3 of a piece of pie is a pretty big piece of pie. It's a substantial chunk of that open space. Finally, is it, not finally, next to finally, is it visually desirable? And I would simply point out, looking at my brief survey of corner lots, there are a number of fences along corner lots in this neighborhood. They tend to be very unobtrusive. They're uniformly made of wood. There are no vinyl fences in this immediate area. Vinyl is a new arrival, but in this area, simply incompatible with the neighborhood. And interestingly enough, the house diagonally across from the property in question has no fence. That's Dennis Stark's former house. They had children, they raised their children there. With no fence, the house directly across on Henry Avenue has no fence. A number of the houses along Henry have no fences. So in summary, I do think there's a jurisdiction question here, but to the extent that maybe the planning board wants to make a recommendation to somebody about this, I really think that this should be, the recommendation should be that this isn't consistent with the open space, it's not consistent with the easement, it's not visually desirable. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Unfortunately, the easement was never signed by Princeton, the municipality of Princeton, although I contemplated it. So in my opinion, the easement as a matter of law is defective. I mean, it's not signed by Princeton. Read the easement. In witness whereof, read the Testimony Clause. The witness whereof, the grantor and grantee have set their signatures to the easement.
Is it binding on the grantor?
No. The grantor and the grantee, it says, Mr. Porter.
Well, it's a deed.
Yeah, but normally, conservation, well, the form of the easement is, Princeton was supposed to sign it. And she refers, she refers to the Sousa case by Judge Long, which is about the Chancery Division, about changed circumstances. That case is not applicable, in my opinion. The case is called Sousa versus Denville, so the appellate division case by Judge Long. That's my comment to Ms. Kerr's comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone else who'd like to speak? Could you come forward? Maybe you should just start down here rather than trying that microphone, if that's all right.
Heidi Fichtenbaum, Carnahan Place, 38 Carnahan Place.
Need to be sworn in.
Yes, Ms. Fichtenbaum, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully tonight?
I so affirm. Yes.
Thank you.
So I live on Carnahan Place, which is just down the street from this, and was very involved when this lot was set aside as open space. And there are many, many things that this neighborhood that I live in have had to put up with over the years. You know, the expansion of the parking lot by the hospital, and now Avalon, and all the tear-down homes along Harris, and on and on and on. And, you know, each time we come to the municipality, to the planning board, to express our concerns, it's, you know, it feels like there's very, very powerful interests aligned against us, and so we have to work very hard to defend, you know, the character of our neighborhood. And, you know, whether this document was signed, honestly, or not signed, I know, and I think all of you know, that the municipality granted this deed and assured the neighbors that this lot would remain open and in a natural state, and that is our expectation. And whether it is the jurisdiction of the council, or it is the jurisdiction of the planning board, that agreement needs to, you need to hold fast to that agreement. And I raised two children on Carnahan Place with no fence around my yard the whole time they were growing up. Avalon Bay just built a playground around the corner for the neighbors to use. Community Park has a fenced playground not a block away. There are many, many opportunities to take your child to a fenced location if that is, you know, there are also pocket parks in Princeton which are fenced, if that's what you really want. And honestly, I know from talking to my neighbors that, you know, the folks who bought this land had to have known, and it had to have been disclosed at the time when there was a title search, that there was this restriction on the property. And, you know, you buy the property knowing that there are certain restrictions, you know, whether those are zoning restrictions or any other kind of restriction that come along with that property, and it is your responsibility as the buyer to inform yourself what the characteristics of the property are and what you are allowed to do on that property. And so that's all I really have to say. That property should be maintained as open space in accordance with the agreement.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, would you address the questions about the jurisdiction of this board to hear this application, just to clarify?
The board, when it granted the Avalon approval, imposed the condition that this area remain in open, remain open. So this application, as I view it, is an application to be relieved of the condition the board imposed, which is before this board, appropriately before this board, the question of whether, if this board, even if this board approves of relieving that condition, there is still a condition through, there is still a restriction under the recorded document that would need to be dealt with between the applicant and the township. And it's a deed, it's really a question of whether it's an agreement or a deed. That issue could be litigated in a different form, but typically deeds don't, are not signed by the grantee, they're deeded by the grantor, and to the extent this is viewed as a grant of an easement, although there is language, it seems to contemplate that the municipality would sign it. All the other language is that of grant and restriction. So I think this board has jurisdiction to deal with the limited issue of whether the condition it imposed should be lifted. That, in my opinion, would not free the applicant to have the relief it seeks in terms of building a fence.
All right, let's, yes, the public portion is still open, and I think there's some other people who wanted to speak.
Anita Geroniac, 1 Harris Road.
Yes. Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully, Ms. Gunning?
I do. I'll be brief. I want to add my voice to the opposition of putting the fence here. You may remember that I was before you when the discussion came up about consolidating the two lots, and I had a lot of very specific questions about what could be built on those lot, that lot. I asked about a fence. I asked about a swing set. I asked about a doghouse. Everybody said no, we couldn't do that. And now, here we are again. So at the time, the lots were consolidated. I understand that's the done deal, and I think Ms. Gunning said at the time, "Well, we know the neighbors will keep an eye on it," which is what we don't want to have to do, but here we are again. We'd like to know that when we make a deal, when we have something that we think is settled and long and hard fought for, that we don't have to keep coming back to make sure that it's upheld. I would just like you to bear that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another person?
Martha Friedman, 96 Jefferson Road.
Yes, Ms. Friedman, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully? Thank you.
I will be even briefer. I just hope that you can hear the frustration of those of us in the neighborhood. We're very frustrated. We've all been longtime members. We've, many of us have been here at all the meetings for Avalon Inn for many years. And it's very frustrating for us that we have to fight to keep every little bit of our neighborhood. And this is just, it's almost an indignity that we have to keep coming back over and over. And we're lucky that one of the members in our neighborhood reads the notes and passes along that things are happening so that we can be here to defend our piece of property. And I just want you to know how frustrated we are. Thank you.
I'm Alice Arts. I live at 51 Hawthorne Avenue. So, I'm not right exactly here, but I come to these meetings, I see this going on, I see this sort of thing going on all over the United States. I find it not only frustrating, I find it dismaying, yes, I swear to, whatever.
Thank you.
Dismaying and frustrating that anybody with lots of money comes in and does anything they like, and they stomp all over everybody who actually lives and has to deal with situations that here in Princeton, we have developers just doing anything they want to, building any piece of trash they like, demolishing anything that they want. We have neighbors who've bought a property next to their property just so this won't happen. We don't all have money that we can buy the house next door when it's vacated so that we don't have all sorts of rubbish going on. But this is the same sort of thing, and it's fought over and over and over and over again. And it's extremely dismaying and frustrating that we go through this kind of thing all the time, and that people all over the United States do too. And that people in power do anything they want to, they don't pay any attention to the actual people, people, who have to live in these situations. And middle-class people are no longer middle-class, they're just, who cares about them? So, anyway, I'm disgusted with the whole situation, and I think it's ridiculous. And also, six-foot fence, I mean, what are they, criminals or something? You know, I grew up in Princeton. I'm 74 years old. I grew up in Princeton in a totally unfenced lot, 51 Hawthorne Avenue, corner lot. We didn't need a six-foot vinyl fence to keep me safe, for Christ's sakes. What's the matter with like a two-foot fence or something for the kiddies, if they got to have something, or a little few plants and things? You know, like a hedge, how about a rose hedge? We have a rose hedge, nice hedge. You know, I mean, this is ridiculous. Excuse me.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Debbie Harrington. I live at 94 Harris Road.
And I'm going to ask if you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
Thank you.
First of all, I think that the fence is inappropriate as to the location. There could be a fence at the back of the property, outside of the place on the property where there is an easement. I think the height of the fence is completely inappropriate. There are no six-foot fences along the frontage or sides of any property in that neighborhood, not on Harris Road, not on Jefferson, on those two, on the same two blocks as Harris. And there isn't on Witherspoon either. So, I think the height and the location are completely inappropriate. I think the fence is out of character with the neighborhood. And I also believe.
Could you just speak into the microphone a little bit?
Excuse me?
Closer to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I also believe that the only person that will gain from this is the owner who bought the property, subject to an easement. Everyone else in the neighborhood will lose. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Doug Sawyer, 94 Harris Road. That was my wife. And I do swear.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, bring some information to the board that may not be evident from the diagram. The side of the house that the fence is proposed on has no doorways. There's no access to that fenced-in area. It has three windows on the first floor and three windows in the basement. So, question is, if you're concerned about your children and want to keep them safe, why isn't it been in an area where you have easy access and line of sight, perhaps at the back of the house, which is off the kitchen and has a back door? So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that?
We have a picture if you'd like to see.
Is that everyone, or any quick second thoughts, anybody? Okay. So, seeing no one else coming forward, let me close the public portion and board, open it up for discussion. Yes, Mr. Cohen.
So, I guess I just want to point out, from my recollection of the history of this piece of property, as it's been discussed, that the language in the easement really is not casual or ambiguous in terms of really not being intended to allow a fence to be there. That was very much the tenor of the discussions. And so, the only way I can imagine overturning that is with a presentation that brought to light some new idea that would have made the former decision of the planning board invalid at this point. And I haven't heard anything in the applicant's presentation to suggest that the decision-making process at that time was incorrect. Their only argument is that, you know, the language disagrees with the ordinance, and maybe we should use the ordinance language, but I think the language disagrees with the ordinance for good reason, because that was the tenor of the conversation at the time.
Okay, Ms. Chapman?
I am fully aware that there was a conservation easement on this property. And I am aware that a fence, a six-foot fence, is considered a structure, at least it used to be in the borough, I think it still is, now that we have consolidated. And I also agree that the language as written is not ambiguous. And I do understand it, I understand what brought about all of the meetings that we had when we were discussing Avalon Bay, as I participated in them as a planning board member. But the reason so much discussion, dialogue, consideration was given to that particular site was because it was big enough to build a house on. And no one in the neighborhood wanted that, a big structure. If someone had built a house there, I can only assume that it would have been akin to a mega mansion. But I do think that, under certain circumstances, there is nothing wrong to consider something else. Now, am I correct, Mr. Bridger? Could a 10-foot hedge, and obviously I exaggerate a little bit, so let me just say it, could a six-foot hedge be put on the same site that this fence is being requested?
Well, the easement agreement in first paragraph, second page says, "This grant hereby conveys to the grantee accepts the conservation easements so as to preserve to the fullest extent possible said lands in their natural and undisturbed state and to ensure the following." And it says, "Except as otherwise provided herein, no trees, shrubs, or plantings shall be removed or destroyed unless the same are diseased or dead. And the grantor shall maintain trees, shrubs, and plantings, and may replace existing vegetation and add vegetation." So, I, I'm inclined to think a hedge could be added. I don't think, I mean, there might be a site triangle issue at the corner for safety.
Thank you.
Ms. Crowe Miller?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I hope we're wrapping up, because to me, this seems like a no-brainer, that we shouldn't do it, just on the grounds that it wasn't anticipated in the promises that we made when we did this, when we made the conservation easement a part of our approval process. But I also want to say something against vinyl fences, just because I know there's a couple more coming around in Princeton, and I just disagree that they're attractive. I'm sorry, I don't want to offend anyone who has one, but there aren't, it's really not in the character of that neighborhood, or I don't really know of other neighborhoods. But I really do not think vinyl fences are attractive.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let me just say something. This discussion took place before, and the easement was put in. One of the things I think that we never envisioned was that it was going to have all sorts of hedges, extra bushes. I mean, this was supposed to be green, open space to benefit the neighborhood. And I agree with the residents that this is a neighborhood that can use every little pocket of green that can be shared visually, that it's not going to find more of this, things will grow up on these, around these new houses and so on. I really was distressed when this one arrived in the planning board office. I think that, I appreciate Mr. Bridger's point of view, but once you start adding hedges and bushes and so on, you really can very well produce a thicket or a tangle or something that's no longer a visual benefit to the community. So, I mean, that's just where I stand on this, and I'm sure, does anyone else have anything they want to say? Anyone?
I would just add that we do a lot of talking about preserving character of neighborhoods at the council level and at the, at the planning board level. And I think this is an opportunity in a neighborhood whose character has been changed by other forces, and for us to preserve a piece of the character of the neighborhood. So, I intend to vote against this, if there, if it is indeed moved and seconded.
Okay. Anyone else? Does someone want to make a motion?
I will, I would like to be guided by the board's advice on the hedge. It seems to be some questionability of whether that's a viable alternative. It seems like some of the board doesn't feel that, so I would look for guidance.
Well, I agree with the chair that the hedge seems to me to be a de facto fence, and that's against, that goes against the idea of it being open visually.
I think there are two issues here, perhaps we could separate them. The first is the application that's before us, which is for a fence. The second is, in legal terminology, not, is dicta, isn't part of this application. And perhaps after the board votes on the first part, we could have a discussion in terms of giving guidance to the applicant and to Mr. Bridger and to the neighborhood as to the board's view of whether adding vegetation includes adding vegetation, which would be in the nature of a fence, which I guess is the issue. So, I think that's, that's not what's before us tonight, so we could separate that as an issue and vote on the application. And if that's not approved, if the application is not approved, we could have that separate discussion for guidance purposes.
Okay.
I would move to deny the application for the waiver.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Do you want to call the roll on that?
Ms. Crowe Miller?
No, I mean, yes. Yes, to deny.
No double negatives.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tectjani?
Yes.
Mrs. Trotman?
Yes, with reservation.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes, to deny.
Motion carried.
Okay, now.
Reservation.
Let's go on with the discussion Mr. Bridger's proposed about the landscaping and so on, the adding hedges and whatnot to the lot. What do you think this, how do you think this fits in with the open space? Anyone?
Gunning, please repeat your question. I missed what you said.
I think the question is, the background on this and our own hearing in the Avalon Bay really discussed the issue of visual openness. Would this area remain visually open? Would it, that visual openness which was there, existing at that time, was that maintaining the character of the neighborhood and the desirable buffers? And so, the issue today was about the fence. The easement itself talks about adding vegetation in the context of shrubs and the like. But I think the question that, that's been raised and with the discussion is whether that, surely vegetation can be added. I mean, that's, that is clear from the easement, but whether that vegetation in the nature of a fence is compatible with the, the document and the board's decision. So, I think that's the question that should be posed, is, is the addition of a hedge in the nature of a fence something that's consistent with the board's understanding of what it did and the, and the existing conservation easement?
Yes, Julie?
Well, on the document we were given, the conservation deed of easement, on page two, number one, it does describe, it does state, they're granting the easement so as to preserve to the fullest extent possible the said lands in their natural and undisturbed state. And then they do talk about possibly replacing vegetation, but they don't talk about adding new vegetation. I don't see anything about changing.
Yes, it actually does.
I mean, it does say add, but it doesn't, at the very top, I mean, that section modifies one which just says that the lands should be in their natural and undisturbed state. So.
Yeah, I would just add, there's a very important word, I think, in the first lead-in, which is the word "and," which says, "To preserve to the fullest extent possible said lands in natural undisturbed state, and to ensure the following." But if, if "and" weren't there, then it would, that desire for openness would just be for those purposes. So, I think it's broader than those purposes, and that it can be freestanding.
I also feel that that house is on a lot that's a full-sized lot besides the easement, the lot with the conservation easement. So, if they want to put a hedge around that, that would be, that's an alternative.
You mean, right in the house? So, that's not restricted.
So, I. Because "and" ensures all the following.
I think that it's deliberately vague to say add vegetation. It doesn't say add a shrub, add a bush, add, and I think the board has a add a bush, add, and I think the Board has a landscape subcommittee, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't know whether we want to avail ourselves of their expertise in this matter.
But I feel like it's not really a landscape discussion, I think it's more of a, can that house kind of privatize that space? And I think what we, as a Board, were deciding was, when we made that decision, was that space, it can't be privatized, they can't put their own, they can't put their own swing set on it, I forget what else, they can't put their own doghouse on it, so putting a fence around it-
Their own maze.
Or what?
Their own maze.
Right. So putting a fence around it is kind of, I think, an attempt to, you know, to make it part of their property, I mean, look like they're part of their property, and it's supposed to look like public property.
Well, I mean, strictly speaking, it is their property, but I agree with the sentiment, like, I think we don't want anything that naturally or artificially encloses the open space, or the easement.
I would just comment that I do know that there are a fair number of low hedges throughout town, it's a fairly well-established, you know, type of enclosure, and I think that if it were a hedge that were three feet high or two and a half feet high, which is, seems to be the typical, when you have a front-yard type of hedge, which is really what this is, because it's on the street, at least on two sides, that you wouldn't lose the visual openness, but you might gain the safety of kids playing in the yard if you had a low hedge like that. So, that, I would consider that more acceptable, certainly than a tall hedge. All right, just remind everybody that this is a theoretical discussion, this has not been proposed.
I think Derek raised the question for guidance, because as you've all seen, the neighbors are-
Lee, I don't think you're being picked up by the microphone.
The neighbors are all extremely vigilant, which is great, and Derek, I think, was looking for guidance, because he's the one they're going to call and say, can they put up trees, can they put up a hedge? So he was trying to get a little direction from the Board, if it, you know, and for the applicant to get it to understand that if he does put up a hedge and you find that that's the same thing as a fence, he'll tell them, no, if they do it, we'll issue a summons, we'll go to court, you know, we have to, so I think, am I correct, you're just looking for guidance, so you know, if the Board's going to say, no, it's fine to put up a green hedge, then we wouldn't take that stance, but he was looking for that guidance, because that's the next thing that will, may or may not come up.
That's what I was just trying to anticipate.
Right, it's not really, is it, does it look nice? Is three feet right? Is five feet right? We just need to know whether, putting up shrubbery that has the same effect of a fence is what you understand the easement allows.
All right, Mr. Williamson?
From my perspective, this all goes back to the intent of what I think this easement is for, and I actually, I completely agree with what Julie said earlier, it clearly states here, "To the fullest extent under Section 1, to the fullest extent possible said lands in their natural and undisturbed state and to ensure the following." I know Alan commented about the "and" with the "add vegetation," but from my perspective, I think that's only there to not restrict the grantor from maybe needing to add some vegetation, to get back to what number one said, which was keeping it in its natural and undisturbed state. I don't think "add vegetation" to keep something in its natural and undisturbed state means you can kind of figure out how to build shrubs to create a fence that would not be in its natural and undisturbed state.
Yeah, I, this, I just want to agree wholeheartedly with what you just said, and remind everyone that plants are living, and who's going to go around and measure this thing, that it's three feet high or five feet high, it's going to grow, you know? And so, is that the responsibility yet again of the neighbors, to, you know, start everybody policing each other's, the height of each other's shrubs? I mean, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. The point of this property, and if you go back to the discussions, which are the basis for the agreement, is that this was supposed to be preserved in an open and natural, as an open and natural space. That doesn't mean that, you know, if somebody wanted to, I don't know, plant daffodils, that the neighborhood would be up in arms. What we don't want is to have this thing walled in, not walled in with a fence, not walled in with a hedge, not one foot high, not two feet high, not three feet high, not five feet, not eight feet high, we don't want that, and that is not what we agreed
I don't know, is that guidance enough? Okay, all right, we've voted, we've had a discussion, I think it's probably going to be a bit of an ongoing discussion, but I'm going to ask, Ms. Trotman?
I move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, you adjourn, everyone?
Hi.
Okay.
I have to tell you a funny story. I lived next to Mrs. Arts.
Oh, really?
You know, it's funny. It's like, when we were little, and we had kids, and we put up a fence between-
Yes?
... our property and our property. Which you always-